March 19, 2025 Select Board Meeting. It's up to rate. Do you have any adjustments to the agenda? No adjustments. Approval of the Select Board Minutes of March 5.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Second.
Second.
We have any discussion on that?
Yeah. Um, I, I want to withdraw Tori Calhoun today because she was not attending the last meeting.
Okay. David.
Hi.
For the carry. Comments from the community? Do you have anyone on the line with comments? Hearing none. Uh, we'll move on to correspondents. We received a liquor license for a class two, second class license for liquor at JJ's Country Store. I guess it's a Dolce store.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Tiffany Bourbon. And also the tobacco endorsement that goes with it. So we need to just, um, as a board, we're approve that being in our town. This, uh, the mottling control lottery.
We have to vote on it?
Yeah, yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
For a second?
A second.
Any further discussion about this format? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. So, Carrie. Does anyone want to speak on this? We also received from the Highway Department and noticed that they're posting, um, roads. It's just a formality that they have to notify us that they're doing it.
They're posting no food.
They have.
Yeah.
It just fell down. Scanning that. We have a lot of people.
Then we'll meet here Saturday night, so.
They posted it and it fell down pretty quickly. Remember, Ray, see it.
We received February's, uh, Welcome Service Department's, um, report, and I'll pass that around for review. Notice of Risk Management Guidance from Municipal Leaders from BLTC. They have a, um, workshop online planned for April 10, 10 and 12, depending on your like, um, to attend. It's free for members. And we received, uh, notice of a public hearing, consolidated plan, demand housing and community development. The draft plan outlines priorities for the use of approximately 14 million in federal funds provided to the state for creating affordable housing, addressing home needs, creating jobs, and improving the quality of life for all homeowners. The, uh, I'll pass that around in detail if any of the issues. All right, we'll move on now to, um, Megan. She's going to talk to us about the local hazard mitigation plan. We currently have one in place, um, 2020 to 2025. It's, it's soon to expire, so Megan is helping us, um, upgrade that.
Yeah, um, great. Thanks, Linda. So, so yeah, like Linda said, um, the current local hazard mitigation plan is going to expire in November of 2025. So we're starting to update the data in the plan, and, um, one of the components we'd like you to look at tonight is the mitigation, mitigation actions in your hazard mitigation plan. Um, you know, some of them are infrastructure based in terms of upgrades, um, you know, bridges, culverts, that kind of thing. Um, you should have included the, yep, you can see it on the screen there. You should have included or seen the, uh, timeline of mitigation actions included in your select board packet tonight. Um, as well as some mitigation goals and, um, just a hazard risk assessment table that's in the hazard mitigation plan. But really I want, um, I know we just have kind of a couple of minutes on this gen item, so I really want to focus on this mitigation actions timeline that Michelle has printed out for you all, um, and the one that you see up on the screen, and understand, um, you know, are there big infrastructure projects or other mitigation projects in town that are missing from this table? Um, I try to go through ahead of time and start to update it. Um, you know, just kind of with, based on my knowledge, but wanting to know, are, are there any big mitigation actions missing here? And also, how would you go about, uh, ranking the priority of these mitigation actions? That's another piece that we have to do as well on the plan. So those are kind of my big questions for you tonight. Are, is there anything missing at mitigation action wise? And how might you kind of rank some of these existing, um, mitigation action priorities?
Well, there were two things that we've been talking about lately in the Select Board meeting. One was the, um, bridge over the Elmore Brook. Um, I don't, I think Michelle has looked at it and, uh, according to, have we had a bridge, um, study of that or we're waiting to get one?
On our birth of the school street?
Um, up here by Flatiron.
There was one done. Yeah, it was done when I, when I contacted, um, Michelle Woodman, and she said it's already been done.
So it's not in bad shape, but it's very narrow and there's a lot of flooding there. It would be good to, um, some kind of a hydraulic study on that or something, some scoping study to see if, you know, we added a pressure of more water, whether it should be upsized.
Okay. Can you add that? That's a good one.
Also, the, uh, hardrails, they're in fine shape. They just need to be raised.
Yeah, but that's just doing that. Need the picture thing.
The biggest thing, every time there's a flood, it was a Royal River, there's at least two to three feet over that bridge. Back one.
Oh, okay. That's definitely one we should add then. And yeah, maybe the next step is more of like a hydraulic study, blood modeling in that location.
The other thing was, um, we've been discussing, uh, our, our concerns of, um, the junction of the North Woke Road and Route 15.
Yeah.
Is some sort of engineering study. Trucks can't turn on that. It's just a mess. People don't know where to go. They're all in the wrong things. I saw one today. I thought it was hurting to go towards the village and someone was trying to turn in. They were in their lane. Um, but then trucks coming the other way. Can't get up without going in the other way.
Right. Um, okay, I'll think about, so that's a little bit more of like a safety issue, but obviously it relates to other issues along North Woke Cut Road. Um, it just being a primary corridor. Um, okay.
Other projects we've been talking about, that's it.
Absolutely. Now, the, we paid the, the culverts under North Woke Cut Road.
That's me. Well, maybe, no, this is hazard mitigation, like flood stuff. Um, it's, it's FEMA. Flooding, kind of. Not all of it, though, is in FEMA. What is it? Why don't you tell us what the scope is of what goes in this, in this?
Um.
Go in this.
I mean, a lot of it is like flood and related and reducing full year erosion and flooding in general, but, um, there's other hazards too that are identified. Um, you know, like, like highway accidents could be a hazard, for example.
So there are things that could potentially create hazards.
Yeah.
On this list. Is that what goes on this list?
Yeah, this, this list, um, you don't have it up anymore. It'll, it'll kind of flags off to the side of the table what hazard it's addressing as well. And then that you had a, um, hazard risk table included in the packet, which kind of goes over the different risks in the plan as well.
So we're just, yeah, trying to figure out what, what is allowed to go in this list. It's not anything.
Yeah, so like, for example, as you see on the screen now, major highway accidents is also, um, called out as a hazard in addition to, you know, flooding, windstorm, storms, that sort of thing. Um, you know, drought, I mean, it, if there's a hazard and, you know, and you have an action to mitigate it, then as long as it's kind of highlighted in your plan, you could include it potentially. Um, so we definitely could include the, the Route 15, North Woke Cut Road Engineering Study. As an action.
And, um, culverts on the North Woke Road Town, um.
Like, yeah, upsizing culverts along North Woke Cut Road.
Uh-huh.
Yep.
What about reducing the speed through the village in Woke from 35 to 25? We have at least five or six blind driveways. And if they're doing better than the speed limit it's set at now, it's pretty risky getting out of them.
Yeah, I don't know if that's quite really in line with the, what the hazard mitigation plan does specifically. Yeah. That's kind of more in line with, you know, like actions you would call out in your municipal plan transportation chapter. This is kind of more of like physical, physical, I don't say physical, but physical hazards. If there's any other, um, projects you can think of, I know we still have got the relocating, you know, like the town garage and fire department on there as well as the action item for the future. And these plans are, um, you know, five-year plans, they get updated every five years to just give you some context. Obviously, not all these actions are going to be, you know, completed in five years, but the idea is to kind of put your big ticket, um, items, you know, that you could work towards to, to mitigate, um, kind of some of the major hazards in town. Like flooding, for example, but.
I wondered why the, um, School Street Bridge was on there. Why is it already put out to bid and everything?
Um, that's a good question. So, yeah, if it's already put out to bid, we may want to take it off the table and just highlight it. Um, there's a section in your plan that talks about progress. So we talk about like progress on hazard mitigation actions from your past plan and which ones you've implemented. So I think you're right. I think it probably should not be in this table anymore.
Because it was, and I know that I was told today that the bid is being awarded.
Okay. Okay, we can make that change. So remove it from the table, but noted as progress. Okay.
I'm, so I have a lot of questions, so I don't have time.
Yeah, I do. Excuse me.
I wondered why, um, purchase new communication and EOC equipment. So I know that we have purchased a new computer for the emergency operations. Is there other equipment that we're lacking that I'm not aware of?
I think that'd be a question for your Emergency Management Director. And possibly. Possibly might be other things that.
We bought him a new computer just for them.
Okay, I'd say that's progress too, just to reference.
But our radio communications is mostly with the oil, which we, here, probably not.
Right, but they also need it so they, they're here, but then they need to communicate to the people out in the field saving people and closing roads and things like that too. Because if it comes here, it goes nowhere unless there's somebody responding to it. So that's what I think you mean by.
Yeah.
Radio. Yeah.
Radio equipment is another thing. Um, yeah, that certainly would help, um, I mean, especially in areas where maybe there's not great cell phone service. So yeah, other ways for them to communicate. We kind of fall under that, you know, improve the EOC equipment.
Who's the head of fire in the future?
Well, right now it's Steve Prince. Um, but in our next meeting, we'll be appointing our new officer, so. Let's see. Brian Bjorky kind of is. No, he's good. He, he worked on this last block. He wrote all the stuff that went, um, out to the public. Um, he does the emergency management, safety cooperatives. He was on top of it. Luckily, there was no flooding. We had an ice jam. Part of Route 15 was flooded down by Fisher Bridge for a while, but that was it. I just wanted to let you know that, um, uh, we've been in conversations with the school. I met with them last week that, uh, probably going to move our emergency shelter up there out of the floodplain. Um, nothing's set in stone yet. Um, they're going to get an MOE and they do have some supplies, but, um, I was actually thinking of, um, reaching out to some organizations or donations for some of these supplies we might need, but anyway.
Yeah, um.
Just to let you know, we gave them 50,000 of our money to put in a generator. They have that connected now.
Okay.
The one thing that's missing is a shower. Um, but that's something they're aware of and we're trying to, kind of work with. But they have much better kitchen facilities and, uh, they have food on hand. They do have some pots and things up there.
Yeah, that could be an action item too. It's kind of just working to equip the new shelter location and moving the shelter to the school out of the floodplain. And I mean, Red Cross might be worth reaching out to if you're going to have it be a designated Red Cross shelter, for example.
Right. It's mentioned that, um, the NFP Municipal Planning Grant, 15 year, 19 partnership project, you decide whether to participate in the non-community rating system. Is that the flood insurance? What is the community rating system?
Yeah, um, and I know, I think the Planning Commission of Woke, Tori met with them, flagged this one too, to kind of look back at the report findings. But the community rating system, I, I kind of wonder if it'll stick around, but, um, it's basically, it's like another way to get an increase in your ERAF funding. Um, you know, so it used to be you could adopt river corridors, right? And get up to seventeen and a half percent. Um, so community rating system was like a more of an outreach type, um, strategy to get a boost in your ERAF funding in terms of your, you know, state match, state local match.
Yeah, we only have one we don't have.
Right, and eventually all towns are going to end up adopting river corridors with the new legislation, so. So, so I don't know, like, if we wanted to leave that action item in there. Could. Um, I just don't know how things might change and if that program will continue to exist in the current format.
Is that something Seth is working with, um, the Planning Commission and the new planning grant? To incorporate into our zoning?
Uh, no, the community rating system is just something from a past municipal planning grant. I think it was to see how, um, like if it made sense for the RPC to maybe help with that sort of thing.
How would we?
With, uh, outreach for community, if the town participated in a community rating system.
I guess we probably.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'd just like to add a little bit to that, um, because the, another thing the community rating system can do is you get, you get points, and depending on how you score, you can, um, save homeowners money on their flood insurance. And some bylaw updates could be looked at maybe because certain regulations you have locally can get you points if you do participate in the system.
And it's not connected to the flood insurance?
Um, if you participate in the community rating system, it does get property owners discounts of their flood insurance. And a way that you can get discounts is by having some, um, flood friendly bylaws. Um, but the municipal planning grant that Seth wants to do isn't necessarily covering that.
What's doing housing?
Mm-hmm.
I thought we were paying him extra money to, uh, do some zoning, uh, updates.
Um, and that is going to be based on some recommendations from the Planning Commission too, and if you want to look at like flood friendly bylaws that might help with the future participation in the community rating system, I can relay that to Seth if the grant's awarded.
Well, please be nice to be aware of it. I mean, whatever the Planning Commission decides, don't we ultimately have the Select Board vote on it?
Yeah.
Right, so, um, sometimes it's good to know all the options that you have to vote on. All right. Don't take up any more trouble.
Is there any, just before we leave from this item, do you have any sense of how you might prioritize some of these mitigation actions or like put the big infrastructure projects on the top, for example?
All right, so we can take up the bridge. That's not on there. Um, we can take out the implement a municipal wastewater system in a Woke village and just leave them not north Woke, I mean.
Okay.
How we rate these won't affect the present hazard mitigation grants from where I'm being on, I would rather.
No.
Yeah.
No, there's, I mean, if you need more time, we can talk about the, more of the rating of the, um, at another Select Board meeting. There's, there's another kind of like rating spreadsheet in the local, local hazard mitigation plan. Um, which I could, based on your input, kind of, you know, adjust accordingly.
Well, I'd like to move on to find.
Seth, can you work?
Town garage, I have a 500-year flood plan. Um, I don't know where I have to move it up to, up far out of the roof.
Next question, everyone, would you put? One of both.
We, we're not thinking about that today. We're just telling you in our plan, it's just a priority. It's not any means, it's not where it's going or when it's going or how it's going to get paid for. It's just when you write a grant, if it's in your plan, then they say, see that it's one of your priorities, so they give you more credit for it. That's how.
I will send the North Woke Road and be mailed upon.
Which one's that? Is that in print?
If you go to page 39, be the top. Two, I think.
And.
If you want to join that as one, you try to. It goes, it's up. Maybe the second one, number one, and the top one, number two. As we've talked about, the Gulf Road Bridge.
I'd like to move up, uh, page 39, the top two, move them up closer to the top. As a priority.
Okay.
And maybe put the last one on the page 38, put her up in there. Do you have a comment? Does it matter? Does it matter? Is it important for us to both throw a number of them?
Um, I think we'll keep the structure similar to how it is now, so it's not necessarily numbered, but um you know, we can, I can move a few here and there, as you said. And um, you know, if there's some that we think are gonna be implemented sooner, we can put them closer to the top as well. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Everyone, you'll come back to us on another part at the time, or you'll reach out to Steve when he's talking to us?
Yeah, I can, uh, um, I think probably the next step is once uh, we adjust this actions table for psych board meeting input tonight, I can reach out to Steve. Yeah, have, have your local E M D review the list as well. How it makes sense, maybe, for Dylan as well, so maybe. Yeah, I think it makes sense to also have your local road form and look at, look at it. So that'll be my next steps.
Okay, thank you. You're set with us?
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, Tori here tonight is just gonna talk to us about uh, Mont Council, Arts Council, Animating Infrastructure Florida, um, is a fun idea before us.
Can I take it away? So, um, as Linda mentioned, I'm here to talk to you about the Animating Infrastructure Grant through the Vermont Arts Council, which is a funding opportunity to help integrate public art into in, just infrastructure projects and build relationships between communities and artists. Uh, a well-known example in the region of where this has been used before is for the silos in Jeffersonville. Um, it was also used to fund a, the art project at the future Hyde Park L V R T Trailhead. Um, but Seth had an idea um for this grant. Um, there's a design grant and an implementation grant, so a design grant could be used to help design decorative manhole covers for the future community wastewater system. This is, uh, this idea of the decorative manhole cover is something that a lot of other cities and communities around the country and the world do, um, Montreal and Austin, Texas, and New Orleans have fun um, artistic manhole covers on their sewer systems, so um, we were thinking it could be a fun, unique piece of local art, um, that might invite people off the rail trail to come check out and be a great way to um, engage folks in Wolkert around the wastewater system. Um, there was an idea at the wastewater committee meeting to uh make it a local contest, so people could submit ideas of what they might wanna see designed on the manhole covers. Um, and there's no match for the grant, and up to five thousand dollars can be used to hire an artist to work with the community and design something, so um, this was shared at the wastewater committee meeting, and um, they were supportive, so I'm here to see if the select board would be supportive of L C P C premier, uh, preparing and submitting a project pitch for the grant by April first, and then if invited to submit a full application on behalf of the town for this potential project. Um, I have pictures of decorative manhole covers I can share if people are curious what that looks like and means, or I'm happy to answer any questions.
Interested in seeing?
The first one is in Louisiana. Has like a little pelican, just says the place, and, you know, some general guidelines to live by of not dumping in the water. Um, there's also this one is kind of cool. Also says, like, no dumping, but has the fish. Um, and that, you know, it drains the creek. Um, it's kind of pretty. And then this last one. Oops. In Montreal. Just some interesting design work and would add a little creative flair to your future system, too.
Where will we have to involve Congress?
Um, another should be at least one over by um, the pump house towards the end of School Street by the forest, um, I'm not sure where else they'll be mapped. Or where the access points may be.
Fifteen spot before the bridge is different about.
Yeah. Is that what it's covering about?
It could be about, it's probably more about pit, it's worse, maybe.
Tori's asking that um, if we would be willing to um approve L C P C applying for a grant for the Arts Council to have a contest in town to uh design our manhole covers.
I think that's me.
Yeah, and there's no need.
It's even me. My only suggestion is to stay with a square.
Well, that's up to the engineer.
Manholes aren't square, because the problem is, her, those ones fall in the manhole.
Yeah, I, I thought the only source could be square, and I thought the same there is.
Everyone uses round ones and square ones, that the older ones that are square have a tendency to fall, while they try to not use other ones.
Do you have a motion to approve of one for the grant?
Oh, make that motion.
Second?
Second?
In further discussion?
That's it, you know, town, just in town, um, are there no other infrastructure projects that we can put art on besides, you know, manhole covers on the ground? Uh, you know, if, if, if there's an opportunity, it seems like having, having artwork in a place that's a little bit more visible, I mean, I'll admit, I, I, the manhole, I like the manhole covers that I saw. And I wanted to shoot this idea down, so um, I just wonder if there's not other places where we can put art throughout the towns.
Probably, but I guess at this late date, it's uh, is this an annual, this must be an annual thing, so I'll leave it up to you the next year to come up with some art for the forest.
Yeah, okay.
I guess, you know, because this grant is due. So. You know, you might not even get it. This is just a preliminary, uh, any, but.
I mean, I'm, I'm up for it.
Yeah, I know. All right, there's no further discussion. All votes in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Most. So, Carrie.
Hmm.
And so maybe just like, you know, if, if this grant comes up again, uh, you know, maybe reach out and we can see if there's other areas in town that like, want some art.
Maybe a rail, a rail trail in connection with the forest, maybe. Yes, I mean, you know.
They won't remember.
Hmm.
But you can maybe put something on there by that little voiceboard, but you say, who knows? You know, we'll put our thinking next to.
So, I mean, there's a fantastic um destination hiking place, half a mile up the hill out here. And that would be really cool, that we need exposure up there. And one with decorative kiosks, you know, that's other things, they just brainstorming ideas, it's, there's probably some other things as well.
Again, I don't mean to shoot, you know, it's a neat idea, it just strikes me as funny to uh think that, um, you know, town of Wolkert, you could stand this for manhole covers.
Well, I think this Tori's uh our administrative person on wastewater, and you know, that's what she's thinking about wastewater.
Well, it's really Seth's genius, but it's a international phenomenon that now Wolkert will be participating in, hopefully, so.
Okay, so, cool.
Thank you. All right. Glad you made it back safe.
Yeah, I took a funny having a key, but hmm.
So we are, um, going to have a uh general discussion about um the future property at Sixty Fourth School Street. I know Gordon's talked to me a lot about things we'd like to do, and you know, the Planning Commission has ideas, and um, I know FEMA has ideas of what we can and can't do, so I thought it might be good to just have an informal discussion, um, so we're all communicating with each other, um. That's what this is about, no, no decisions tonight or anything, but. So I wanted to start with um just going over again that um, attached to the deed that comes to the town. You know, the property shall be dedicated and maintained as open space forever for the conservation of natural flood plain functions, uh. Such uses may include parks for outdoor recreational activities, wetland management, nature reserves, cultivation, grazing, camping, except where adequate and warning time is not available to allow excavation, unimproved, unmade parking lots and bumper zones. Um, no, no structures or improvements shall be erected on the property without prior approval from the Department of Public Safety, um. Pretty basically that sits. So the whole idea is to keep it a flood plain, but there's so much land there. Very little is really in the flood plain. So I'll just open it up to the, the floor, to whoever wants to maybe talk about some ideas they're thinking about, or.
Um, I don't know if I can speak to the entire planning as a member, I know that I'm interested in seeing some kind of trail that goes from, you know, rail trail down, walks along the riverbank, comes back up and either climbs into the parking lot, it will be where the library or cafe or wherever this is gonna be. Um, I'd like to see something like that, maybe, you know, a picnic table or a bench, something to that degree. And then the other thing that we, in this room, have talked a lot about is parking and snow machine parking and, and different things. And my interpretation, reading those rules, is we can do a gravel parking lot. Uh, and if we have any minor grade alterations that have to happen, we have a, a one-to-one storage capacity. To say we raise this by so many cubic yards, we have to lower another area by the backside number in order to offset that, uh, in order to get approval from FEMA. So it's not something that can't be done. That's really my own, as a member of the planning commission, um, goal for the property. But I also know that it ties into town forest stuff pretty tightly.
Yeah, um, from the town forest perspective, it's such a fantastic opportunity and wonderful thing that, that we're able to acquire this property. Um, being basically mostly wooden, wooden portion of the property sits, um, and provides the, the optimal access route from any place in, in the town on the rail trail um, up into the, uh, you know, uh, up into the upper parts of the forest and the, you know, the parts that are closest to the town. Um, it's also really beautiful forest just in and of itself. Uh, a- and, um, you know, the, the, uh, it's the plant life that's there. Um, particularly, notice in spring, the, the wild onions and stuff like that, they're out there, it's, it's, um, it's gorgeous, and it's a fantastic opportunity for, um, people to be able to just have access to, um, really interesting terrain, and I mean, really good for woods. Uh, so, um, I would really love to see it, what's the word? I don't wanna say developed, but I'd love to see, um, trails running, you know, established through the property to guide people into it and through it in a way that is least disruptive to the natural environment, but also makes it really accessible. Um, and, you know, I don't know that that's, uh, how that impacts other planning within the town, I think. Um, the one thing that it does is make a, a forest, I mean, the outdoor recreation, um, that much more available and accessible, and therefore probably brings more traffic into the town, uh, specifically for that purpose, just because it's, it's so easy and right here. Um, I, I think the, um, see more traffic, it will be more attractive to people. Uh, so, um, what I, I would most like to know is just that, um, the select board, the planning commission are essentially behind that idea. That, uh, we see it as part of the town forest and really the gateway into the town forest. And, and that, um, establishment of trails should be planned in conjunction, and it should be part of the next phase of, of trail planning within the town forest. Let's, if, you know, to, to take it one step further with that, um, on the forest committee, we've been talking about planning trails up onto the born, you know, up onto the height of the born parcel. And we have a tentative map, a tentative route for a, a trail that we, you know, ascend to the height and, you know, circle around the top and, and come down. There's also the possibility of, of a trail that goes up to the top, up and over and up to the bottom, that's um, you know, a mile or so, probably not a full mile, but half a mile out to the, to the west. Um, those are, it's a good hike from even, you know, parking right here. And so in terms of being able to sort of pave it out and develop it, and, and make up the access, the obvious thing is to, to open up access to the, the, um, west over property itself. And to start to go like connector trips that, you know, come from around the corner on the rail trail, and go off the ridge, and then come, come back down over here. Um, and open it up to multi-use, um, multi-use access.
I'll take this meeting.
Um, I'd like to, in my view, um, although again, uh, you know, the, the um, restrictions of FEMA's imposed are, are much less restrictive than the conservation movement. Um, I, you know, I, I won't advocate for motorized access. Um, and I think it's, I, I don't think there's a, a need for it, I mean, I like Um, and I think it's, I, I don't think there's a need for it, I mean, I think it's more of a direct traffic place. Uh, but, uh, but I would love to see bike trails, um, and, and hiking trails.
Well, my personal view is it's a wildlife corridor through there. I think putting more trails in there is going to improve it. Plus, if we have a sugar bush there, I'd rather see it stay as a sugar bush. We wouldn't have enough clearing and whatever brushing of the trees, just leave it as a sugar bush. And let the wildlife have the corridor through there. So once you start putting trails in, who knows where you're going to force them. Deer, bears.
Well, there are a lot of trails, logging roads, nice logging roads, you know, I, I walked like a little bit with you last year, um Roy loved. He was with us and he maintained um a lot of nice logging trails up in there, so they are open, but it needs some work. There's a few of them, you know, that need some work.
Needs some cover, some water barriers.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as that, I, I, I'd like to see it stays a sugar bush and whatever roads are there, just leave them for them to put in the sugar vines and.
But the sugar bush doesn't go all the way up to the end of the property?
Pretty much, yeah, yeah, the whole west over property is, is um.
There's a lot of maple along that area.
Yeah. There's a lot of ash, which is a bit of a concern with the Emerald Atchore.
Right, these should be taken out.
That this could be, do forestry work in there and would be good to combine that with forestry work um on the board parcel as well. I don't think there's any ash left on the buildings. There is.
There's some.
Yeah, there's, there's, as you get higher up, there's quite a lot.
I just didn't look it out when they were there.
I think, I think they left in a hurry, to be honest. Um, I think they may have gone after it, but uh there's um, you know, you, you can see where basically the edge where they logged and there's a lot of the ash. No, I hope it's the top right up here. Well, you know, there's some, there's some big ash trees that have to take you to. They're not much value. It's not what I've been hearing from the foresters at the moment. I know um, planning officers did a quick segment, I mean, they harvested got to sell the last from their property and um uh, things may have changed in the last couple of months, but uh there's been a, a strong market, a lot of it's going in. And so it's, there's been a pretty good market for it. People are terrorists, that's when people are probably so. Nevertheless, um, you, you know, it's a case to be made that it's, that it becomes a, a uh health issue, a, a safety hazard. Um, when the, you know, big trees are dead, they're, you know, blow from the winds, if they're dead, you can't really take them out of the equipment. Uh, it's definitely a safety hazard for lawyers to get the assuming value there. So, I would say that, you know, sugaring is not incompatible with the other uses. But I hear you about the, the um concern about, you know, maintaining the wildlife capacity and, and um, you know, aesthetic value, frankly. Because that is one of the major corridors through there. I mean, I've, I've seen a lot of activity through there. I also, I also know that um a lot of places, uh, you know, for instance, Katie's Falls, um, is a, a good example. Um, there's a lot of trails in there and there's a lot of wildlife activity and, and um they get along well together. So it's, it, you know, the uses aren't compatible.
Being the logging roads that are there, it wouldn't change it much, just people walking up, they're biking on it.
Tori, do you, you have your band up?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to offer a few observations and thoughts, if that's okay too. So.
You're here to represent the planning commission?
Yeah. Um, looking at the um parcel map online, there's a pretty significant frontage to the rail trail on the portion that's closest to the river and then uphill. So it seems like a really good opportunity to connect to the trail if there's interest. Um, as Michael had mentioned, and um in addition to potential like loop trails through the village or future trails on the forest side. Um, which align with some of the goals in the L V R T management plan. The current town plan al- also supports development of new river access points. So that seems like a pretty great spot to launch a boat. Um, close to the river there. Um, I'll also just mention that this um property was mentioned as a central planning point for the Better Connections Grant that Alec Jones just helped the planning commission members submit, so um developing your goals and concepts at this point is great if that um grant gets awarded and there's a consultant hired to support the town with planning. Um, and I'll just offer that if you'd like to schedule more dedicated like concept development and planning meetings, I'm happy to help organize those with you all or um work with other LCPC staff to develop some concept designs for things folks end up agreeing on.
As part of the grant or separate?
Separate. So we could, you know, um, schedule dedicated meetings and hash out some ideas more and develop concept designs. Um, in advance of that future potential grant too.
Well, I, I'd appreciate it. I think, I think it's a good idea that everyone has kind of a voice. And it, it's not just the board, select board figuring everything out, finding out what people in the community want. And they wanna utilize that, so I'd appreciate a couple of announcements. You know, maybe the people in the village, you know, could be the ones walking down night or something.
I could see easily the, an access trail, the rail trail from there. And maybe I can do launch maybe over there. That would make sense of maybe a picnic bench.
Yeah, I, I think anything that happens on the hill to Gordon's point should probably, not probably, should absolutely have the forest committee's input on how that meshes with what you guys are doing. Anything that happens down here, I think that you should have an eye on, you know, the potential for the cafe and, and other things that we wanna do on this stretch of frontage that we have. And I think we have a pretty cool opportunity to have like a rail trail destination. I know this is a pretty highly used portion of the rail trail. I know there are other portions thinking, you know, like Marsville or Ten Row Road has, you know, things set up and they have all those different kiosks and all informational things. You know, there are other towns further up that are, are really utilizing space. I, I think you're right, Gordon. I think it's gonna drag a lot of people here. I mean, relative to what we see, it might bring a dozen people here.
Well, I, I mean, honestly, uh, um, you know, in the fall, I was down there just walking out into the woods and lots, and every time I come in and park in here, um, you know, I just chat with the people that are in the parking lot, and there were a fair number of people who were like driving up here from up there to park here to access the rail trail. Um, which, you know, that was, that was kinda cool.
There are very few parks, and the rail trail doesn't yet have a lot of established parking places that are easy to access. You know, within a five mile, ten mile, so this would be a very nice addition.
Right. And then if we have easy parking, um, you know, access through, through the west over driveway um and easy access onto the rail trail from there, you know, this, this parking area is limited in capacity. Um, personally, I'm not really excited about seeing an expansion of parking mules walk like that. Uh, it's, there'll be people driving us memories out there. But uh, uh, you, you know, the, the opportunity to expand parking, um with, with access right across the bridge seems like a really cool thing.
I mean, a lot of that, you wouldn't even have to fill in and do anything, because the upper area, you just put maybe three inches of gravel in a small footbridge. Because you've got a good half acre to three quarters of an acre there, the body of land. Wouldn't change the flood plain. You know, the problem I see is putting in a canoe or rafting area is gonna be pretty tough along that ledge.
Yeah, yeah, but the other thing that, that all that ledge does is it makes it, you know, as long as we can in, find a way to anchor to it that doesn't impact you know, flood flows, it makes it fairly resilient. I mean, the one, um, pond road has held up pretty well with all these different storms, tar line of wear. Yeah, I, I just like, I see, I see it as an unfortunate loss to the town and unfortunate loss to the homeowners. Who've had to give up that property, we should be doing everything we can to try and recapture and give that property a purpose as opposed to some of the other flood properties that have been bought out. You know, it really isn't something valuable that can happen. Aside from flood storage, which is valuable in its own right.
Besides the ledge, it makes a good way if you're gonna go get a canoe anyways, it makes, if you have to four cars and canoe. Pretty much you can go down, touch something on the front, and go down where the ledge goes down deep and launch your canoe down there if you're gonna go canoeing. Makes no difference if the ledge is higher up, you just still have to lug the canoe down anyways, just go down another hundred feet, you need good eyes to get to it. And zero.
And, and if water access doesn't work, if it proves to be problematic, I mean, it's not like Woke is without it, we have access on Pond Road, and I believe there was a discussion of access from the fishing game parcel up here by the bridge bonds at some stage.
My only thing is with ledge, once it gets wet, already am slippery, because that stuff is smooth. I mean, I, I can see launching them up here where we're buying that piece out by the bridge overpass by the cemetery, a lot easier, because that's a sandy little area down there.
Yeah, and so maybe that's, maybe that's the place for that. I just, I have not seen a plan on the town forest during the county meetings, but I have not seen a plan for parking. I know we discussed a few different parking areas, you know, for some machines and vast access, and we've talked about parking for rail trail access and cafes and different things. My thought was, if I've got two kayaks to carry amongst other parks in the west over driveway and carrying down across that ledge carefully. I don't, I also don't know what kind of liabilities that might face if there was an injury on open space, I, I don't.
I mean, there's enough area over there if you wanna launch. I mean, you can park basically eight to ten cars over there beside the bridge, that would be fine. Again, once that building's gone, there's, I mean, yeah.
Doesn't fishing game, fishing game's gonna have ownership of that. Yeah, but you can still launch the property up here, uh, by more than one of us. Uh, in a previous select board meeting, we.
Oh, yes, yeah.
I remember asking about parking at some point then, and there was kind of a non-answer about it.
I think the uh road is, we have to go and get rid of that sand and put in some gravel. Either way.
I don't know, I was down there with, had some maiden this fall, I was recently down in there. Now, when the rail trail went out, they, they, they ditched a corridor, but they expected the mom and town to figure out the parking.
Signage and, and yeah, yeah.
They're starting to do some signage, but now, uh. Okay, I guess we have a plan, we're trying to know, we're talking to each other, we weren't here tonight to decide on it, but to just keep communication open, so we're all working together to come up with something. Thanks, Tori, have a good night.
You too.
Not gonna have a project manager's report tonight, so we're just. So I'd order administrative assistant.
Today's conference, we're gonna be at meetings today with Belinda and Parker uh FEMA to put the numbers together for the interest of online of credit. Uh, Parker hopes to have that, I'll lend for approval before the twenty eighth of this month, the um amount is unknown.
But we submitted twenty six thousand. Whether that's approved or not.
Uh, as far as me, I uh, I'm trying to spearhead the greenup day. So we posted it on Front Course Forum and then we posted it at Villanwell, uh, L R S W M B. Um, I'm looking for someone to run that, if there's any. Anyway, you know, right, it's it. Mike Love, if you wanted to talk about that you contacted Bert Tenny, just haven't.
Yeah, uh, I reached out to Bert about the um traffic comment, those flashing speedway signs. Um, he is supposed to be getting a form and some information for us. I thought I would have it by tonight's meeting, but I do not, so I will continue my handbill for next meeting. Just to see, uh, his, the information that he gave me was that typically the state will pay for the signs and the installation. Uh, and then the town is responsible for upkeep. Said that the town would also be responsible for the power bill, should we choose not to use solar. Uh, he also said that the solar ones, especially in the winter months, tend to be hit or miss as to whether or not they generate enough power heat themselves. So there'll be much discussion about locations and, and things like that, but he was supposed to give me a packet, so next meeting.
Um, I, completion has submitted the transportation advisory committee form that they asked for a top, uh top priority in legislature, uh, the transportation. Um, based on what we talked about last week, last two weeks ago. That's poor drain in the garage, so we had him showed out, Travis Michaud out again. He pumped a tank again, he actually went inside with the scope and camera, he doesn't see any problems, he says there's no sludge buildup on the bottom. There are no cracks that he could find, there, all the plugs are in place, um. He did see a small trickle of water entering from the inlet, the building side, but he, he said that wouldn't be the reason that it's filling rapidly. He is arranging a time with Dylan so that he can, Dylan can excavate it or the road can excavate it to expose the tank at the inlet side so that he can let go into the building. That's the next step. Unless it stops filling, um, please go away.
Was the location of that off the front corner of the garage where, where the trucks are?
There, there, yeah, it's, but they're not parking, I mean, they're parking the trucks there, but they're not parking heavy, but by the end of the day, it's not heavy for that, but they're, they're fine.
Yeah, just, just wondering if, if it could be surface water. Because that's being all plowed off, if, if the frost is getting in there and surface water is getting through a cover. And we should, yeah, and maybe we should make some effort to protect that so that it's not.
Is it a cover that you could put Monroe's up? Does the rubber gasket seal a couple of screws on there? That would keep the water out if it's not.
The picture that I saw was a green plastic cover, so I think we would, and it had risers to get from the concrete up to, to ground level. I think we'd have a hard time sealing that. I don't know what the cover.
Again, a bunch of those now that instead of that plastic covering has four screws with the gasket, so you can't get surface water into it. Again, a bunch of those now that instead of that plastic covering has four screws with the gasket, so you can't get surface water into it. Like flooding.
So maybe that's some food for thought as well. I can maybe see if we can. Eliminate the potential for surface water by tightening at the top. I mean, and again, I I could be talking out of left field, but the professionals. Tell us.
I might have to explain that to me again later. Oh, and then including the three highway grants, the the municipal highway grants and. I would be seeking approval to submit those, um one is to repay. Two two more sections of Moss Willcut Road, we did um and it's just a resurface, like an initial path. Asphalt, um we submitted it last year, just gonna resubmit it this year. Doubtful that we will get any of these, but especially this one because we just received a grant. Two years ago to do those other portions. Um that grant would be for two hundred seventy seven thousand with a twenty percent match, it would be fifty five thousand four hundred for the town. Um one grant is to resurface. The three point one miles of Elmore Pond and and that just need to throw down some gravel. That is for a hundred fifty one thousand dollars with our twenty percent match, it's thirty thousand two hundred dollars. And then the final uh grant is to resurface. This five sections of Elmore Pond Road that are the the worst. Um there are about two to five hundred feet sections. And that grant is for eighty five thousand three hundred forty five dollars. With a twenty percent match, it's about seventeen thousand one hundred, I feel like all of. Like our gravel, but I feel like our match would be pulled if we were to receive. The the latitude for Elmore Pond. It's doubtful again.
Especially the portion of paving, but also the other sections. Is our culvert database up to date in those areas or maybe paving?
Dylan's already down check, I did finish our um. The culvert inventory so that it's pulled out now for what we had planned um as critical, critical we skipped on this year and there are twenty seven culverts on there, but some of them may be, if FEMA covers about five of them. Of six, um Dylan's just got it, he and I have to sit down in front of the times, so he's just gonna go out and check them. And then we have another list of about forty culverts he really just needs to check to keep it's not, he just fills it in the last. So um we're working with that.
I just wanna make sure that when we're resurfacing, we're not digging culverts up next year.
No, no, he definitely, he has about six culverts in mind who are resurfacing, maybe three and that goes three. And we can be right there and take the prioritize our our list. That's really what I have.
Okay, so you have uh you're asking, we've already approved the plan for this municipal planning grant. This is a resolution that goes within um. So you just want us to sign it? So do I, we sign um. Where it says here the legislative body?
No, we, yeah, right here.
Yeah.
And these names are the Elmore.
Yeah, that's Jim's ours.
Yeah, but these are the Elmore.
So are those, so we need to be in some legislative bodies. These are all things.
You will be signing the uh annual financial term, these these town grants, municipal grants. And so. Here it asks if you. Have the three hundred dollars per, I mean, that doesn't really change.
Did you go there?
No, it's a.
I think the um.
So so you have an option to um approve applying for. Um three municipal highway grants. Uh class two for the Elmore Pond Road.
Oh, make that a motion.
But the second one is a portion of the Elmore Pond plus two, and the third one is. Maybe in the north, hopefully in the north, Wonka Road plus two, so you have a motion. If it's second.
All second.
Okay, further discussion.
You caught there. Than a whiskey?
In order to apply with its grants, we need to uh up sign the annual municipal plan that's due by April fifteenth, so I'll pass that around. Signature. While that's happening, um. I'm asking, uh today, uh Michelle and I uh held a pre bid meeting for demolition of. Sixty four School Street and but fourteen School Street, we had a few. People here, um but we're asking um position to allow us to. Open an award with bids next Wednesday at the ball, keep the ball.
Can do that.
One second.
All second.
Further discussion, you're welcome to come if you want, uh it's gonna be March twenty seventh at one o'clock. One of your banner.
Hi.
Close. I really have the objects, other than um I had mentioned earlier when you were here that I. Was meeting with the school about possibly um. Making that our emergency shelter. Meaning the facilities manager, they have their generator in. Working on an M O U and certain things, but nothing really to report, it's a discussion right now. Because it's hard sometimes to, at least in the flood of twenty four, to get people over here.
It's hard to even get them out of the building. It'd be nice to have it as a staging area also for our highway and fire department.
Well, we do that anyway. We didn't change your twenty three.
I think we should have it in writing. Have an assistant. Yeah, it was for sixty hours and a thirty two hour work week.
He wants uh just that the kinds of office day, we really want this principal, doesn't have any authority, it has to be a school board.
I think you might have to go to the south.
We own the school, well, let's ask for it, we're former school board member, who should we ask for a. Allowing to town to put their fire trucks and highway trucks up there. You know, we think it's a blood. You've done it anywhere way without asking, but.
Yeah.
The school board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah, that's right, Tim.
Well, certainly a reasonable request, yeah, I mean.
No, there is, it's a format, I guess.
I mean, it would be nice to let them know before.
Oh, yeah, but. I mean, the the concern will come at this um depending. Will will be would the structural operations, after school operations. Um you know, so coordination principle, presumably if there's flood preparations, there's probably nothing going on at the school, but. But even so. Yeah, this coordination with the school would be would be helpful. And so um you know, getting less by the school board is the right approach. Just in terms of of the emergency shelter though, not that this is something that we need to tackle, I think the school board would have to go, but I would assume that they would need OSSU group.
Well, so we did have the facilities maintenance, that's who I met with, the facilities maintenance person. Who is in my OSS.
Oh, Joe Mish.
So he's doing that. Um we met with him about um making the school the emergency shelter. Um he's already given the keys to get in there, the code keys and um he's working with Hardwick. And and Hayes and Bo, he's very knowledgeable in it and what needs to be do, got him what's required and certified, so.
Is that in agreement with the generator, with that kind of like?
No.
No, it's never. So so what I can say is this, from my experience with the school board and working with OSSU is essentially um the Woketown School District. It controls Woketown Schools.
Right.
Um and delegates s- some of the administration, the administrative um work of it to OSSU. Because it's efficient, it's good if we can have, if we combine courses with all of the schools in OSSU and. Be able to share experience, share expertise and and actually spread the costs as well, be able to. To get some help from the other districts um when there's a need to. Clean up after a construction operation or, you know, do something like that, so so having um centralized coordination of it, which Joe was providing. Um has been really helpful, but at the end of the day, it is the Woketown School District and Woketown Board. That's ultimately responsible and makes makes the decisions for the building itself. The uh and and likewise for hiring the principal, friends, since the principal um works with that on hiring the teachers and so forth, you know, how you say. So OSSU is responsible for curriculum um and you know. Um but the, you know, the stuff about building, especially. Completely responsible, they're capable of it for.
So I think what I'm hearing you say, Gordon, is that we need to get a written permission from the local school district rather than from the school district or rather than.
Yeah, that's correct.
And do you know where we?
They serve the same waters, we just not sure, we can look at the school versus.
Do you know where the past weeks? Then is anyone that's accessible or do we part them on pavement or?
No, I mean.
I think he's been parked now on that.
That doesn't pick up, you know.
Um if you, there's then there's a couple of school buses you parked out back, there's there's, we're talking, people heading from right around the back for.
It sounds Dylan, I don't know, I know and and he didn't go up there in twenty three and he couldn't get his truck, they got flooded. And I asked him in twenty four to move him up there, what he did, I have no idea, he could have taken it home. And it would have been fine with me, you know, because these are the plans, I didn't want them in the market.
Yeah.
And then he couldn't get to him.
I know most of the fire trucks were out because he was trying to.
But one of them, we had the.
Well, one of them, they drove through four feet of floodwater. From my understanding, it wasn't.
Yeah, it was your house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I tried to.
Yeah.
Tried to tell him, I have to do with stupidity. Spending one do it twice. Oh, no, he's young and dumb, oh, okay, yeah, that thing is.
Okay, well, we, the other thing we have here is a cer- certification of compliance for town road and bridge standards and network force inventory, and I think it's more than just signing. Because we as a legislative body certify that we. Give you an understanding from far over the town road and bridge standards. Public works, specifications and standards passed and adopted by the select board.
So many grab, the standard you sign them every year, I think from one of my consults.
Yeah, we do.
And nothing has changed. You want me to grab, but I.
It's up to them.
Yes, yes.
We probably certify that our adopted standards do uh need or exceed the minimum requirements included in the June fifteen two thousand nineteen. State approved template, and we also certify. And we have an up to date highway network inventory which identifies deficiencies and risks of progress. Culverts highly related to the table. An estimated cost of the repairs.
Do you think the only part of that that I think that we might be on the cusp of, though, is that we are currently competing. Of the culvert inventory, and I don't believe that we are completely, but by the sounds of things, we are sort of very near to.
But we have one, it's just not up there.
Yeah, I don't, it doesn't sound very updated.
And we don't really have a. Um we check it every year, but you know, we don't have any um.
We do, we just walk around the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I just thought about this too, and I thought we have more than two from the last year, so.
But I mean, we check this every year.
We don't.
It's something.
We're well on our way to have a one of that.
Yeah.
As far as only a remiss continuing.
But but doing that, we have one of the states are um. But, but doing that, we, everyone, one of the states are, um. There is one. We've been. Where were you?
Listen on that. So, when you have, did you get photos of installing the slope failure and the ad?
By, it's six ninety six. I was thinking about it today, why don't you send them that letter that he sent us to remind them? It has that good map there. Um. You know, you could put out that map and just on the road, you know. It's, so there's already pictures, I mean, I was thinking about. You could almost go to the house and enter to a park. Not very looking.
Hope it's nice, we can meet up there. Thought it was real, I think it's true, it's on real.
Anything I can help with, I just look in my calendar, my entire twenty seventh is gonna be spent on town-related business, so.
Well.
If you rest, it's not necessarily for the. Four eleven, when we meet with solar guy, or one where we meet with Bido, or, or something else later in the day here. That'd be happy to help.
So the guy wants to finish on the geography system.
Oh, great.
Look at that. In this morning.
Well, they get to the car.
I think, um, you're a. Hope you have a, an executive session.
Thank you, Gordon.
Are the only person we get kicked out with the executive session?
No, no, it all needs to, also.
Yeah, right. Don't kick Jack Chapman, he can't talk. You want to process, or end it?
Got asked, Michelle, she's in charge of this one.
Um.
You want to come back here?
We may have to, yeah.
Are we voting on it or anything?
Well, we have to make decisions, I don't know if you think those can be voted on. What a puzzle.
I can decide later, yeah. Who do you got? I'll make the motion that we go into executive session, uh, in person with Michelle's. For our personal discussions.
I'll second that, thank you, Gordon.
Meeting, force meeting. What's the next one? Um, second Thursday? Uh, you said, oh, the second, I'll say. Six, yeah. We have a rule.
Um, there, although it's in favor.
I, I.
Was the carriage.